Good evening. Thank you for coming. I'm Jack Brown, Mayor of Colorado. And uh. We appreciate you all. I'd like to introduce uh. Some people, some people um. Our P C T D P and L D P. Our borough managers, Earl and Tino. Our council president and the other table Tom Evans. Adam Deaver, member of council. Tino measures the council area in front. Penny Lanning. And Marjorie Gold. And they will also get their valuable income from the council. To live at all.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Denise Firstel. Mayor Swiftell. Another one of the members of H R and that's why we should be creating a choice. It's not running a little place apart, but. Say that every time it's best. I'd like to introduce our police chief, Chief Ellis Lawton. Our borough manager, Matt G. And then at the table there we have councilwoman Shawna Long, who else? Councilwoman Angela Sterling. And council president Chris Hansel. And let's begin.
All right. Did everybody hear me? Hear me okay? So we'll get started and I will ask that. You keep all the questions till the end. There are cards that Sarah passed out. Please write the questions on the cards and then we will, then we'll go through the cards at the end. Okay, apparently in the back doesn't care. Is the mic on? Sound better? Okay. Okay, so the reason we're here. And everybody, I'm sorry, watch out. The first show.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for your audience. The purpose of the evening is to discuss the most merger of the Brad Hills with the public department.
So the first question. We have, that we may have, what is regionalization? We've been talking about regionalized police service. Regionalization also does consolidation for shared services. Is where two more agencies combine their police forces, their staff and their assets. Provide better and more consistent services to residents of the municipality. Yeah, what's that?
We provide a better, one of their, loses a lot of their satisfaction. Prior to the previous staffing issue. Brad Hills depends primarily on part-time officers to fill the traditional. Swizzbell, Borough Control, Brad Hills, forty-nine hours a week. We call it program. For the past two years of this. Brad Hills, all the activity you were allowed was taken least or higher than right. Swiftell runs the part-time officer who issues between full-time officer. And part-time officer turns short, so I can just talk.
So a lot of regional ones. The first thing is. There's very few people that are going to the police academy. Uh, it used to be, we had ten, we used to have ten officers, Swizzbell, ten part-time officers, now without four. That's difficult to get people and as soon as you get them trained, they move on to a new department. Uh, for a full-time job. Uh, there's a lot of quality candidates that fill our time police officer positions. Lack of applicants. Um, this will give us the ability to add some time police officer positions. Uh, there'll be more stability in personnel. Uh, well, the ability to provide specialized units, detectives, K nine bike control to uh, to Brad Hills. It spreads the cost over a larger area. There's less duplication of services and equipment because there'll only be one chief. Right now, there's two chiefs that want to be in this department. Um, we need, we would need less cars to do this. Um, just, you know, overall. The savings within services and equipment. And there are additional funding available to the new department uh, in former state parents.
In addition to the grant, there are also the benefits of regional optimization. They approved to continue for relating businesses to the law enforcement. And approved coordination of all the forces and services. And improved distribution and deployment of police personnel. Need another staffing. And improved training and personnel, which is meeting. And improved management and supervision. And improved career enhancing opportunities for police officers. And then grant opportunities also.
So why are we, why are we looking at this now? Um, Swizzbell and Brad Hills are both having staffing issues. We do our full-time, our core group of fifteen full-time officers. In Swizzbell, we range between three to four uh, part-time officers and many times we need to, you know, we'd be better if we had eight to ten. Um, Brad Hills has one full-time officer and one at eight part-time. Uh, the lack of part-time officers available, as we said before. This trend is not anticipated to change in the near future. Um, as we said before, there's more access to other um. Other, other units from Brad Hills. Uh, we'll get, it'll give Swizzbell access to additional full-time manpower. Uh, and we're trying to be proactive. A lot of these municipalities are marching now after they, they hit the critical juncture. We're not there yet. We don't want to get there. So we don't want to be proactive, but we're looking at doing this now before we actually are forced into something. And then if there's other, any other needs for municipalities uh, who want to join, they have to do it on our terms. Uh, rather than we doing it on theirs.
So again, this is true. And everybody's always worried with this. But the first thing we're going to have to do is appoint uh, five year board directors. Which would consist of Brad Hills and Swizzbell areas. Uh, Brad Hills has a mayor and two houses are registered to Swizzbell. And then um, the managers from Swizzbell. And Brad Hills would be there for administrative support.
Some of the people that have. Full-time staff, I said, one one chief. One hundred and four departments. Four department officers. And then maybe a specific, you know, a bit eighteen ninety-one on the staff, there are three K and R officers, the one, the other. Department staff, three, four. Three, 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 six officers. With a couple of them, two full-time. Usually the officer, and everyone will be.
So this is an example of what it was second world like. Uh, one of the features you receive by installing a full kind of personnel. And the equal balance of the personnel is uh, across the point where ours we share. So that would be based on the whole of our general. So and then we're. You know, we're setting up again, setting up again, we're setting up again, setting up again. And this is one of the things that would be improved. Yes, you have. Four walls. Four walls, the piles that are working in the ship. I'm reading, but this is how. This is what I had talked about before. Uh, probably. What we were proposing is to put all Brad Hills to be by the free control of. Um, and it's just a lot of officers who weren't, weren't, weren't that shit, it would be super relaxed or. They do a lot, you can find that act and then one of those. Pre-respondent, they have a lot of pre-respondents. Um, the law's competing, the law's pretty, we be able to, and all assistance to be able to. So those laws would be in the, the entire area of this. Uh, most of the shit. So one of the questions to ask is, is there a. All officer B, what will we lose, kind of? And the answer is no, you actually just see more equal distribution of uh, police service. Um. But the next one would be, you have to provide a map in this free control. Um. And our current contract, our, not a big deal, our first commitment is to work. And that's why I would, uh, remember to do this is free control. In exceeding that. We would divide Brad Hills in half, so control the, this is the. Control the two, three, our parts of the middle. So and anyone was having, we may have one, one officer, one two, Brad Hills, three, now, very simple. But the goal of this, if it's a whole officer, it will be in those, most of the ship. So I'm a little soon, you can just call it. Uh, the relevant. And the.
So let's share you today. So these two departments will be along. Uh, that will include the community, which is still up there, you know, the new day is a start. Um, New York is additional charter. And of course, with the new day, we're going to have people for everything on the parks, several uniforms. Uh, we have twenty-four sets of, I think, some people around the hills. Because right now we have trucks. On the weekends, with this setup. And uh, we have meeting who has the state police command. And control for us, but we need to use. Uh, more officers, more sharing. And more full-time officers and several part-time officers, which will help control other part-time boss. And instead of taking police, they will work for us. So the evening has changed. I have to leave that thing. You still have all my work for all emergencies. And all emergencies and people still respond.
So the next, the next one, I think it probably was important, I didn't do this in the proposed budget. And this is just a simplified budget, there's a lot of detail that went into it. But basically, the proposed budget for first year would be three million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. And sixty-four cents. Um, there's some revenues that come with it, uh, such as we get pension aid from. Uh, state, which is about two hundred thousand dollars a year, which probably go up a little bit. Uh, there's some other things like gals would pay a little bit towards their healthcare, so that's about twenty thousand dollars. Then just like cost of police reports and other different things like that, uh, would make up about two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars of revenue. So the remaining costs would be two million, nine hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. And sixty-four cents. The proposal we're bringing forward for the councils shows a, a contribution from Brad Hills. Of five hundred fifty-four thousand dollars annually. And from Swizzbell of two million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, and six hundred eighty dollars. Um, now Swizzbell would lose some revenue. Um. Because. The uh, state pension aid would be moved over to the police department. There will be also lose revenues from the. Uh, the officers' healthcare contributions, things like that. Uh, so there would be, there would be a net loss to Swizzbell of a hundred seventy, approximately a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Which was above our cost of two million, six hundred nine thousand. If you look at the next line, the current Brad Hills cost five hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And the Swizzbell cost two million, four hundred ninety. So basically it comes to a percentage where Swizzbell would put in eighty-one point four five percent. And Brad Hills would contribute eighteen point five five percent. So an increase in Brad Hills of seven point seven eight percent. And in Swizzbell, four point seven eight percent. I can't speak for Brad Hills, but I know in Swizzbell, annually it goes up two and a half to three and a half percent. Uh, every year because of the traction, wage increases, healthcare increases. Insurance, whatever it's called, insurance, stuff like that. So when you're looking at the four point seven eight percent increase, it's really not, it's really, you know, a percent and a half of what we normally expect. For uh. For, for the next year, this is national revenue first. Or not, it's my natural response.
So the health also, uh, the community, we're looking to such a work. But multiple brands will be available to start a boss for the regionalization. And this grants will be used for restocking of the existing vehicles, hard to be vehicles. They have car cameras, thorough missions. Images. And enhanced server, sort of the car camera and while the camera down. Urgent, they've got equipment, so that all officers can be effective in deploying. The purchase of the uniforms. And also the safety equipment, such as tool, their vest, and that's right. And even if you wanted to, you can have pay of the fifty percent of the change down for the first year. Uh, additional cameras, and you can use satellites. And you do a website, social media, and have, they can have their website. Citizens can go on, get information. Regarding their, regarding the drivers. And also the training of the officers. And if it is a new style, it's a very new before, or a very controlled management. Staff, like identified by our all the possible, or minimal, or newly, we want to the drivers. And we've been kind of many days for several months now, which we're in. We actually got a little bit of a relationship. With our, so, I don't see any issues. And we will help each other out. And all that is provided for the rest will be operated by the budget. And any states, the current, the current grants will be placed into a debate. So with several years, and for some reason, we've been married for there. We were ready to have a surplus that will continue. Without raising taxes. And save, uh, we, together, use the future to provide the increases.
Yeah, that's really important. That's really important to starting a new department now, to try to save the money, I'll try, because the, the problem is that we would take three to five hundred thousand dollar grants out of the. Initial budget and there would be a huge spike next year in the cost and it would be kind of a false savings for the, for municipal, the residents. What we're looking at is we can take this down the road a little bit, um, and say, put any money into the operating budget for the grants, from the grants. And then just use that in the future, um, when, when uh, to keep the increases, reach municipal power. So possible timeline, uh, we're talking about, and this is the, you know, this is the best case scenario. And if, if our council did want to move forward, it's probably what we're going to shoot for. Um. The, right now, we're having a public meeting explaining to everyone, we'll hear your questions. Um, in September, we can have a session with our full councils at Swizzbell and Brad Hills, see if they want to move forward. Uh, in October, we can adopt the necessary ordinances and intergovernmental cooperation agreements. Between October of twenty-four and March of twenty-five, we can complete all the necessary tasks, which we'll get into on the next slide. And then we're shooting for April first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so beginning of the second quarter. Second fiscal quarter to, to, to start a new department. So. There's a lot of tasks to complete here. Um, you know, the first thing would be council voting in a public meeting, both councils. Draft our intergovernmental cooperation agreements and form, to form the department. Uh, council would have to appoint, appoint members. Um, police commission would have to convene, they would have to appoint the mayor, vice chair, solicitor. Develop commission statement, uh, decide on the name for the department. Uh, that advertises for members, they'd have to establish a civil service commission, advertises for members and uh, point to the civil service commission. Um, appoint a civil service commission, solicitor, the civil service commission would then have to draft by.
Some additional capacity. But there's a lot. Uh, what I have to add to us are. And uh, appoint civil service over for the police department. Um, appoint the police chief and also, and then. He would appoint. The uh, sergeant, who would kind of. Um, obtain identity numbers. That are related to the state and federal boundaries. Uh, the door would initiate, would be called tracks, whether it's regional police department. Because whether their contracts. Would end because we're creating a whole new police department. And then um, they would have to have a financial institution. So then they're going to put the cost where your bodies. Decide to put their qualified checks signs. Um, adopt financial controls, hire account, or a firm, considering we have to do a lot of account questions. And you're appointing a monitor for any laws. And also just like a payroll provider.
I apologize to everybody. Case in the flash, let's move on, break side. Um, private grant funding, develop design, police card, decide on the uniform, the badge design. Order new uniforms and badges for all police officers. Uh, begin to have the police vehicles restrike, uh, hiring the existing officers. Because all, all existing officers have to be rehired to the new department. Um, but all their seniority will transfer, their rotation time, their pension. Everything will transfer with them. This isn't a, this isn't being done to try to get rid of anybody. Everyone, all the full-time officers. Will be automatically moved over to the new department. And then we would have to hire the part-time officers also. And also transfer vehicle titles over to. When new police commission of all vehicles are currently owned by municipal, will be transferred to the police commission.
And after all that, and then we have to see both our healthcare. Uh, we're good, well, I think this is our decision to transition the pensions. Uh, which actually, and also the documentation shores. To make sure that they are insured coverage, which is for the largest home insurance, a lot of them. Uh, that would be a little easier because both drivers use the same drivers. Or short, and it's more common that are pensioned. Um, and then we also have to develop a term, all the, all same for the department. Where all the people saw, for, for, within every point, forgot or hired. As services, which is all the, to be from this department. And then finally, for the new, this department, in force.
So that was a very quick overview of the different. Aspects of this. And the twenty-five minutes of invitation talked about here put together. Um, because we have to look at our tenant providers, um, then look at all of our insurance providers and designs, and it shows that. We use all the same agencies, so it's actually pretty good. And we're kind of forced to continue to use them under the regional department. Because most of the insurance carriers will not rate just police department. They will only rate the police, the regional department. If they have one or both of the insurances for the post municipality. So we will be continuing to use those unless we go to change our. Um. Change our providers. So. Then, then, you know, we're, uh, questions. Did uh, anybody have, did anybody fill out the card or did anybody have questions? There will come around and collect those. So Sarah is going to read the questions around and if you asked a question and you want more clarity. On our answer, the answer may come from over here, from our council members and theirs. If you want more clarity, please raise your hand and ask. Don't, don't get excited.
I'm ready. Maybe my guess is, if they're in short, you know. Um, how to consider other regional options, um, contract, swizzbell, or all Brad Hills coverage. And I didn't, I was just gonna make a better region, I didn't think it could be considered contract, it's available to whoever I guess.
Is it all?
Okay, um. We had thought about it, and honestly, it would be too much, and also. By regionalizing, we can still have a voice. By having, you know, individuals on there, and council members, you know, sitting off the commission. We still have a voice, and it's still a part of it. Where if you contract, sometimes you're there in our city. I hope that answers the question.
Um, we're hoping that this, the providing service to all, and this is people. So I know that. It is easiest to do this contract, and like, you know, Brad Hills is a contract, and they, who they would have. The other thing, the other thing is, is that when you do that, that is not a whole, that's very hard, but it would be available. And if we just have a track, so. And uh, and I know the regional department. And then. And Brad, and Brad, and since our. Receiving the part of the one possibility. Uh, that's, it's sort of like. That's, it's still a long. They're only here for like a small week. So. I mean, those, those are the few reasons we do it, uh, regionalizing this.
Has this, has this been, has this been resolved?
Yeah, I think what we do out here from my, you know, really, he supports any regional. Regional position ever, yeah, I would get.
Okay, this one is a multiple question, um, probably the question for the orders, because it could be just with that, so maybe you have a sheet, and then you can follow. Um, maybe have orders of these various questions. Um, will there be more or less of our systems around with our, can it raise up the hours?
Yes, we'll prove it now. And that's the word, one of the one, the more empty, the more city would go, is, and it's all a list there. When it's had a damage, cameras, so that people will be able to watch and overview cameras of the history. Oh, it's, it is.
All right, the first part, uh, what happens to the location on the last end, so I think for that, maybe where would the new location be, whatever the answer. I guess I can answer that question. Uh, the early, um, street was abolished, um, because it was unsafe for a stack over there. Um, we are in the process of giving, uh, for you, for early, that would be a little unsafe location. Um, once that goes to bid and we've got our, um, partners, uh, will they be able to have a value station, um. Well, we have a, we have a, the police station located at that location on the residence street, which, um, on the map, we saw with the three borough, the different three zones. For leasing, um, with the red dot, and there's four, and the new station, and which would house, well, the new department. It regionalizes, will there be any differences in application or information during?
Um, we're, we're, we're hard enough to get through that, still a lot of things there. But yes, we, we can do more of that, um, the three regionalizes, and we have the.
How were the settings different?
Based on, I believe, in the whole volume. Um, it was lined in a way that tries to equally serve the whole volume. Um, there's uh. So no loss, enable. More loss.
Would the proposed budget be increased passive?
I can, I can answer for Swizzbell, uh, my, my current answer is, we don't know. Um, but as I said earlier, you're looking at a two and a half, three and a half percent increase annually. So adding another percent and a half. We hope we use, back, and use it right into our budget. A whole lot of great taxes, but we have to start working on the twenty twenty-five budget again, uh, but we will work through it and try to find it not.
For Brad Hills. The increase in the level where we normally have each year. So there is experience, but a little bit of a significant increase, depending on whether or not we have the bill, but. There's, but also, um. That can be determined by the assessment. Because that plays a big part in all in our budgets, and, um, so what we're doing is, we're going to do. Uh, the assessment, it would affect our budget. It would affect our budget because you know, whether they have the mill or this uh. But like that's unfortunately. We're looking at a possible tasking for this. So the whole question for that, any potential increases to act as the offset by like a ransom? Also that I agree is already been one.
It is hard to say to the point because we don't know what, what kind of grants are going to happen. We know probably get some of the grants. And if we can use it often, I agree we will. Um like I said, um you know, it has to be, it's going, everything is personal, so. Brad Hills will be responsible for eighteen point four five percent, we're supposed to be responsible for uh any one, any one percentage change. So you know, any grants, which comes to some regions, which is part of it. You know, they may or may not, you know, stay a while tax to me. Uh and then it may be for a year or two, but if started to take it, like I said, we need to start our projects for twenty twenty-five here. Um you know, we, we worked up a bunch of this, we have to try to factor that into our response.
Okay, but let's see if we can call it in the study. What answer did you see?
Yes, E C D was just all of the E C D um completed study for us. And then what we did is we took the information from that, so it's in the E C D study, refined it down to what our actions were. D C D makes a lot of assumptions and you know, very broad assumptions that you know, we'll pay three hundred thousand, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars to buy that insurance. We went out and got quotes, we know what the exact numbers. We know the healthcare costs and we're going to be, you know, the pension cost for it. Uh so we took it, you know, took the categories that they specified. What we can do to the D C D recommended, um, I think it's twenty-one or twenty-two full-time officers. But then it's not that we didn't do that. We did that, both of us would be ready to attack. Uh that's what we're trying to stop with, they can be full-time officers and it's equal time equivalent. Uh you know, which would be like three to six point time officers. And you know, that's, that's how we regard that. These need to spend a much more longer than uh we will be coming down to, you know, very average, other than usual.
Nice clarified question. Is the, is the D C study available to harder to redo?
I, I came here.
Is D C study available to call what do you?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't, I don't.
What do you know, will you realize that this is a big, big? And what do you know, will you realize that this is a big, big? Want to see if this is successful. Yeah.
I mean, it's always been, one was probably fair. Our goal is to provide a service we can to even know this is how is. While even the budget. Based some of the reality that there are very important parts of the police officer. We are relying on. The health staff and the partners to keep it over time costs, we're very careful. By consolidating, we feel that adding several kind of officers that that maybe will minimize to be like that. Uh that maybe. That's kind of one of the factors. Uh of course, we will, we will report to, we use, we use, use it in the past or we're making sure that I was just here. Which is a more detailed or assistive to the FBI. Um and it's specific to our online. Use that to wait, give them our four in action.
You're answering the question, was the crime rate or call volumes that used to determine the zones for judicial?
All right.
Right, how is it similar or different from other police renewal locations?
Uh I don't think it's similar with what um high martial craft, which and there was one that I was too, more, more original, which is carbon. It's similar to what you said, our bracket, you know, the fact that um. Um so there are other examples of sympathetic original police departments. That we have spoken to their chief, uh their officials about how we were in this um processor. So we got, we solved it, and we will continue to resolve um. To make this acceptable if the local schools decide.
How does a percentage of municipality would be determined? I was supposed to say that the municipality would be in. Uh the other thing is one part of the relationship. Because we're obviously a smaller, uh I don't know that our population is fifteen, forty-five, I believe.
That's a little bit, ours is a little bit.
But then I thought about this. Can't get rid of the last question. Um anything else for the long term? Do you need my judge in this decision?
I mean, typically the budget is a very, uh. In this whole department, so. You know, what I did, the uh, I think you're almost, you're real specific to be, uh what it costs. Should it be the part that be enacted by the council? There, there's all this real numbers. They call it a lot of waste, or they did. Um so it's not like we're going to have to recover. Either from now, because they've turned a lot of hiring, when they had this figure that everybody knows. Is that any clear question?
Um has any testing of the new zones, but they can be needed to determine the efficiency?
I can think of the hardest part, which is because um. I'm a, I'm a player of the arts.
If he can buy, I control those, just over now, those three to five. And uh and it looked at any time before we would have meant any part of it.
Or also.
And and those walls.
Given that the initial problem is all of the ZAG, uh looking at certain point, this new plan buyer involves hiring new, how was solved?
Because of both departments, we decreasing the number of our time that they have. And people will have to pull from the sauce. Because of the, the pay, the increase in pay and that. So we're just looking to maximize our money just in it by adding additional.
Um what has radical has been changed? What was the difference?
They were what, contracted, we call them dedicated service, but we've got.
I don't know, I'm not sure if the question, I was, is it for the police service or the contracted services as well? Is there a different one? Yes, if we're going, if we're going to be heading to fifty thousand, how much habit is that paid?
Okay. Yeah, I. Bradley will budget for five hundred and fourteen hours.
That's what we actually say. That's what you actually think is here. Are you talking about even much to you service, there's this down the way now?
What is your police budget?
Our police budget, right now, we need the contract service that we just see on the link there. It's approximately five hundred and fourteen thousand a year. And usually pays up maybe three or four percent each year. But right now, like we just, we tried to hire a whole-time person, it would go up so much time. Than that. And one of the things they did is pension, because we have to contribute to that pension. So we wanted to add just maybe two full-timers, you'll add a hundred thousand dollars increase in our budget. Just to have two more, to have like a whole four. Because we've already invested this. Uh the chief, you know, he wants to learn, he can do a full-time, we can. Uh give you more hierarchies, but unfortunately. We just cannot afford it, so this, this is more beneficial for people for our. All right, so the staffing, staffing, does the slide show that there will be four full-time on the uh, or is that one that I'm?
Yeah. One of the third. So, but yes, I don't think, I don't think they're ready to fall already.
Uh and how specifically does it benefit each?
Well, it would, if it would uh eliminate a lot of overtime costs. It would give us a better job for all of the leadership. And you know, right now, controlling Brad Hill all the weekend and also the, the smaller staff. So it would increase the number of men on the street and then women on the street at a day. And Brad Hills goes from a part-time department to a full-time department. Uh they had right now, stood to do this, uh be twenty-four seven, um three sixty-five day a year department, plus they were like K nine officers. Uh controlling the borough and detectives, and also we have like controls as well also. Uh so there would be great benefit to both municipalities doing this. Uh because right now, we both have staffing issues and as she's walked in said a few minutes ago. Um get a full-time officers, there's a lot of getting, getting one out of office, because this is their career. And they will, they're, they're likely to stay and they're, you know, they have a shift to work, they're, you know, part timers. If they don't have the main ability, they just don't work company for that month. Or the full-time people, that is their job that they have to do, so there's a great benefit to both of us.
One of the things that needs to be changed, um. With the, our, we made it to the nominee eight. Uh we used to get a number of apps. Um and one time, why they have more of that. Um that lasts for about ten years, and we can definitely have about fifty. And there will be years that have responded, because of all now. When we get an application, then we usually need to hire someone. And then we go to the office, they're very similar to the training. Uh when we get the long, right, because they have to make it a full-time dog. That person would say if they were to have this organization. That's like, there's just a lot of pressure. So we give it more assistance to the, you have, people who have money, it's trading, they're combining, or getting into the body. There, there's, I mean, one third chance they're going to say. And for a further period. So that's a lot of the difference. And that's the main difference. We're in both. My, um, it's not a way, and we feel that this is the most efficient economic way to prepare.
Okay, this is the last question that I have. Will size to the program be available for you? Yes. And to request the E P D study, how should people do that? You can hit over there, um, administrative, access to over there dot com, and we can get that for you. And any other questions, comments, I'm going to do.
So does that give you any questions?
That, that one more.
Who want to have a ask?
Uh what's the private rate that I've been in uh Swissville and in Rad Hills, whatever the time, I don't care. Ten to.
Uh radical is the law is, doesn't have a lot of, all of. So that's one of the reasons I think it's worth is we're not adding all, we're adding more.
Well, but.
Um we need, we need to provide that. You kind of, you know, like you're talking about, Brad Hills is standing, at least three days. Um well, my name is, they feel, oh, shit, you're down. That's, you know, the people who watch the news and talk to the police, entering halls and the communities that they live in. They might think that will show off. The most, we have ranked it with Brad Hills as that least, their calls to go there. Because of the second, we don't have to have. So. Is that any?
Because yeah, you can follow up to that, so the private is turning down, this is though, it's not much of a writing rules. What's the justification for the mark description?
Well, essentially, the individual officer turns to one community, we share it. Typically now, we have a minimum of three percent of the control cell. The private tools that I usually have to. So you're just re- deploy your people on official banner, and you're eliminating some of the certification that we talked about at the beginning. So you don't have two chiefs, you have one, you know, you don't, you know, radical, you know, where they need two officers to back each other out. If we have four workers to do the community, such as people who assist each other. We don't. Not a way that helps. And I will argue that if you were the communities, the surprise to the head of it, that's one of the problems, that's a very rule. The third part is to go off and get it.
Okay, in addition to the population, was a member of the housing unit stand for the mental homeless, seeing any remaining of the remaining was split?
Uh no, population and that um, that number is about set, so we need to look at what the actual populations are at the time and to do that. Because the census bureau calls me up, and they need a population justice person. And when there was service, several, several different numbers were out there, and that changes something. Before we can do this, we finalize this.
Okay, another question, um. How will police budget filter through the boroughs? Um will the, the police department assess the budget and the boroughs then have to split, or will the boroughs have? Say into how much they pay into the regional department?
Uh the boroughs would not say how much they pay because of the members of the police commission are all our officials. Uh being two mayor and a pre-council, two councilman, remember the hood toe, and a couple of the member of the black toe. Then it's, then it would be rather budget, um with Cheryl, I, and I help. And you know, you, you try to keep it to minimal, uh and the decrease, no benefit at all, because there's no, no benefit in the, uh, police commission. And you're fixing that budget point percent, and then that is supposed to bring it back. So we have a vested individual, and also like, all the, all members of the board are um. Our panel members in there. But yeah, members have anything they want to add. But. It's just, we need it, we have to. Here, that's it, you played it somewhere, we have to do, we have to have coverage. That's it. There. Anyone else on council? Questions or comments?
How would you determine of the council members who will be selected for this commission?
That's going to be up to each individual council, determining um. You know, who you want, who you want to appoint, like I said, in the, in the information, in the information documents, I will propose, and we propose that both mayors have a, have a seat there. Because the mayors typically oversee the police department, that is their primary authority, and then it will be up to the council. Because mayors typically oversee the police department, that is their primary authority, and then it will be up to the council, to our council in Brad Hills. And determine how uh how we wanna, how we wanna do that. You can make it that whoever sits in a certain seat, whether it's people on the police committee, whether it's the chair of the police committee, whether it's council president. Whether it's one, you know, chair of police committee or member of the police committee, totally up to you, and that's something we'll have to discuss in the next uh months or two if we move forward.
So we, we currently have three members of council on our police committee. Um and I talk about, okay, we currently have three members of council on our police committee. Um are we not gonna have our police committee? Or are we gonna have our committee and also this commission? Because if we're having, like, oh, we have a phone, or we just, um, because otherwise the numbers are kind of different and we should probably. I think we need to think about how we're numbering it, uh because then it's just two members of of council, one there. When there should probably, with our, maybe that's three. Um and we shouldn't de- decrease the number. Uh if it, if that's going to be the overall commission, we're not gonna have the three person commission, then we should probably have three people from Swissville on there. And however many goes on from from Brad Hills, and I'm saying that there's a reason for that oversight. Uh we also had on our commission, um we have a liaison from the community. Um that we've had, so those are all things, I believe, that we would have to still discuss, because this is, this is all proposal. This isn't, this isn't anything set in stone, but I think that there are a lot of um. Uh a lot of things that we have to consider in terms of the big, great detail. Uh when it comes to it, but I think that at the moment, this is the first step in in outlining uh what can we do? To ensure that we're maintaining the safety of our communities, um and also maintaining the safety of our offices. Like, I think one of the bigger issues that everybody can bring up and 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 everything, faith constantly. Is uh we would like our professional to be full time for the most part and and to be paid like professionals. Um and at the moment, we can't necessarily do that with what we have and how it's structured. So I think this is coming down to some of those issues um that are hitting us pretty hard. Um and 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 fortunately, I think we're at least trying to address uh some of these issues easily coming up that we have not, um. No matter, you just don't have the budget to get more of them. And so I I don't know if you've noticed, but you know, we have a steady stream, we're training the officers in all the purpose. Because, you know, they get trained here and then they go over there to get full time in another department. Um that is not an efficient way um to run a police department. Wait, I have employees, right, um you want your employees invested. And I definitely want to make sure that my officer know the community, know the people that are in it. I would be very upset if the state police had, I mean, that's not happening in our neighborhood, fortunately, right? But if the state police who don't know anybody, don't know history, don't know anything, don't know anybody that they're encountering, that they're encountering people. Um and and so it seems like it would be huva to make certain moves before the moves are imposed upon us because we have no choice.
Here's.
I think just to add on to that, to that end, I mean, this is, we're trying to be proactive here for thinking in this regard, um. Brad Hills has expressed that this is a deep need, um it's not quite a serious of need for Swissville now. Uh but it will be, uh it's only a matter of time, and I think by trying to get ahead of that, as one of the points said, um. We get to set the the terms of this, I mean, we we have, I mean. I don't know what I'm allowed, not allowed to say, but we've talked to adjacent communities, if they would be interested in having these conversations with us, and they told us no. Um and that's fine, but I I would be very surprised if down the line, they don't experience some of the same difficulties that we've experienced and might come back to say, hey. Maybe now we are willing to have the conversation, we're the ones that are established and can help to uh set the terms of what that would look like, we have a little bit more uh ability to to navigate that.
Good okay. That'd be um. Nobody wants to have the state police come in and do that, nobody wants that. You know, I mean, by the time they get here, all kinds of things can happen, you know, so, you know.
I was elected in November of twenty thirteen. And took office in January twenty fourteen. And in the ten years plus that I've been around. We would go on to uh fifteen meetings on society. With people with the letters, I was on firm and other. Um. Every incarnation that you could think of, the Woodland Hills region, which was, was this a strategy? They tried to get the local involved. I mean, every kind of uh. Mass up is gone. Uh we had such, we were jackals and we was there and we. About. Getting a threesome. And he was all for it, and unfortunately, he became ill and he's no longer there. New people aren't as in a mind to do it. And uh Hank still wished it for the better. And uh. Kind of, even then, the trial, right, he was technically retired many years ago and he's still. Who knows, when it was the one he knows. Um four years old, a protocol. A long time ago, um but they wanted total control. Um it it really wasn't. Was to pass the government and the, and not be set back for our reasons. Um we're still trying to merge this to the church of all the time. And that's about it. So, I mean. We finally decided we would be proactive. And if he was somebody that liked. And the uh, I mean. From the way I actually, when I think sixty six, fifty, the main, the political areas, political areas, Brad Hills and political. For seeing a common level of responsibility. Um. When Churchill area was four little church of all the time, even the child. Um. Long story short. This meeting. Is not done. Just have a gathering, it it's uh, we were all around, we all need to set up. And and. We don't all advertise it. Those kind of discussions are all.
Yeah, it's been a tender process. Yeah, this is why I did about a thought which I, we saw the need for combined departments. For regionalization and Brad Hills is the natural heart for us. Like I said, and you know, we're still in there and even taking over their weekend patrol, so. This is, this is just a natural next step. And I believe that it will be a model. All of the resources, um, these departments and we get set up. And, you know, make it as our department instead of having it pressed on us by the Commonwealth or. Whoever makes the decisions, so I don't, I believe this, I believe this is something we need. Um and we want to forward and other Swissville, Brad Hills, regional or police department. Thank you all for the, and your time and your question, we're very, very good, very valid, and I hope we can do them well and um. Yeah, let's, let's do this.